All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:31. Sorry for the minute of tardiness. We will officially call this board meeting as a total order. So we'll call, just to be clear, we have all board members present and our senior student with the president is present as well. Of course, as always, here with us at the table is our superintendent, Dr. Pedroza. And then welcome to all of our guests, both virtually and in person. All right, so we'll now shift to our welcome message.
No problem. I won't read these out loud here. So first one, our agreements. We've got staying engaged. One, two, number two, we experienced discomfort. People have to speak your truth, accept and accept.
Do you have that agreement?
Uh, I agree. So we, in the Temple of School District, acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play, was a traditional land of the first people, of the Seattle, the Duwamish and Mupesu people, past and present. In honor of gratitude, the land itself and the Duwamish and the Mupesu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. We strive to work alongside the Duwamish and Mupesu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls on the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working in this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Of all inherent labor, from involuntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, I pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically been currently enforced and create inequities among the people we serve.
Now I invite you, those who are willing and ready, to show some of the Black families. My nation's people, the states of America, to the republic, which stands one mission. All right, so can you get a motion to approve this agenda? So, all in favor?
Fine.
Next, we are going to move to our District Two Board Director of Report. So just a little bit of history about where we are today in relation to this. So in November, after the election, no one on the ballot for this position. And so as Director Bowler Jack transitioned out, the position became vacant. And so we have had an open application from since that time. And at this point, have interviewed a total of three people over that course of time. And so we are now going to move to fill that position. So I'd like to open up the floor for nomination. For a second?
A second.
Okay, so for this, we'll do a roll call vote. So beginning at this end over here with Dr. Brooks. Sorry, this is to appoint Kate Cooler as the District Two Board Director.
Okay.
Where am I?
Yes.
I don't get it.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and then Alex, well, if you got a formal vote, they're excited. But thank you, just people look at you. So whatever they assume you're referring this and something like that to go with these situations. But we certainly take his feedback as a part of the process. All right, so with that, it is approved, Kate Cooler. Congratulations. We've just served the community in this way. So I guess technically, why is that meeting right now? We had to do the old first, but it's not on the agenda, so we can't do that. But you can join us. You get votes on the actions.
I'm honored. Thank you very much.
Oh, yes. Yes, and that brings us to the best part. On location, Dr. Cruz said, we are so excited to compare at Cascade View Elementary. So excited, I'm familiar with this. Before you do that, do you have any stories? We're not on camera.
I missed notice that too.
I see. Okay, so just wondering. Sorry for anyone joining us online. Hopefully you can see the shared screen at least. It has the amazing.
Well, it's not being recorded, so.
But it's recording our voice, just not the camera. There we go. Here we are. Oh, wow. Well, now. So you know we have a sign, but it's stuck with time, so here we go. So welcome, if I can be Board of Directors. Super excited to be here. You know, my full rookie. So here we go. We can go to the very next slide. So I love this slide because in that welcome, our family liaisons were amazing in making sure that we were able to all the languages to be supportive of families, someone who didn't have anything. We originally used that black sign, bring out the house. As you can see, this is a ribbon cutting for our dual language classroom and our family resource table that we have with any event centers. I'm ready. And let's start off with our strategic plan. This is a different strategic plan. Everything I will talk about tonight. We'll look and see what this is and what we do during Cascade View Elementary. So these are the areas that I would hit on in different places. Attendance, Swiss data, I-Rating, race equity, anti-racism, support needs and celebrations. And once again, it still all ties into the Here Learning Happens, which is our District TV plan. I'm super, super excited. So our school improvement plan included basically three big overarching goals that we started last year for all five schools. At Cascade View, we focused on a couple of these areas. They all had, we include academic, race and equity, and then we looked at sale. So for us, looking at here for high achievement for all, we are looking for a hundred percent of our students. You know that takes time. We know what they do, I-Rating twice, they need to keep that. Conducted some opportunities for us to get the data. We know the kids have to hit their stretch bowl twice to get there. So we are, we are aiming high. We also are, for race and equity, a hundred percent of our sophisticated staff participating in conversations. We started off with our kickoff this year. Thank you, Dr. Pedroza, with our anti-racist summit, the work that we're doing with Dr. Penau as well, with Dr. Roger's art. And then looking at disciplines, last year we had a high discipline amount for African American students. So our goal is to increase it by five percent. And then looking at sale, looking at how do we integrate that within our tier two and tier three behaviors. So we're going to talk about I-Rating data. With our I-Rating data, you're going to see here, this is the five level placement that comes out of I-Rating. From there, there's other additional data that we place in the, that was activated to see where students are and where they're going to be. And so right now, if we look at the three grade levels or more, we have seventy eight students currently at Cascade View, which is eighteen, nineteen percent of our four hundred and fifty nine students that we have in the world. So those are the students that we need to target to focus on reading. And as you look at the bottom for the placement domain, we can see that the comprehensive overall areas in later on informational sets are our biggest pieces. So digging into what are the next steps? How do we know it's working? How do we know it's not working? I know our teachers are working extremely hard and looking at reading. They are using their POC time, their lesson phone, and digging into it. When we look at phonics, you're going to see a smaller number there because phonics is only for tender first and second. Phonics is not done for third, fourth and fifth, so therefore they are not tested on a level. So now the steps are to our stretch growth goal and our annual typical growth goal. We have fifty nine percent of our four hundred and fifty nine students that are reaching the typical growth, which is amazing right now. Our stretch growth goals, you see at the bottom, we're not there yet, but as a reminder, they have to hit it twice to get there. But the fact that we are almost at sixty percent of the typical growth means our students are growing. And remember, this is about growth over time. And so when we go back over to the current placement distribution for the three or more grade levels, we were at twenty four percent of our students were there at the first window of I-Rating. This is a screenshot from our second window. We have one more window. We went from twenty four percent to eighteen percent. What that means, we've had students that have jumped from three or more to maybe right that grade level or right below grade level. That is showing the growth over time. Once again, to reach the stretch growth goal, they have to hit it. So going from twenty four to eighteen, even in our two grade levels, we went from twenty four to eighteen. You can see that forty one percent is right there in the one or right below grade level. So the students are growing. So the stretch right now for second diagnosis is not where we want it to be, but it has grown so much with the typical growth goal. So we're excited to see it happen in the first. Next is our I-Rating map. It looks the same as our reading regardless of the same graphic. For math, we do have a higher rate of students that are more graded below like the new one. So we need to look at that nineteen percent of that four hundred and fifty nine students, what we need to do. When we look at. Just like, oh, it's generally there. Okay, for the placement domain, the one thing though about I-Rating, looking at geometry and some of the other areas, the students aren't very good in the science process. Because you know, in math, you're going foundationally, right? So looking at the third placement over the years, that is where we really see the growth of the students. Because when they're taking the first and second window, they're definitely already in the numbers and operations. They're already in algebra and algebraic thinking. But they're just now getting into that side of geometry. So we're going to see, this is what I hypothesized, we're going to see, when we see those red trends for where they are on the bottom of the placement of domain, it's going to shrink. I think we're going to have more yellow. Because then the students would have had that learning to apply to that third window. So, but looking at where we are, if we go to the very next slide for our typical growth and our stretch growth, we are fifty four percent for typical growth, which is still amazing. For reading, we were at fifty nine percent. And once again, I don't know what it is, it dropped to twenty four percent, but we were at twenty four percent again, and we've dropped to nineteen percent. The students are still growing over time, which means that they are getting the concepts. And thinking about math being the way that it is, I think that when we look at our current placement distribution, it's going to continue to grow more in a positive way. So once again, looking at our strategic plan and expectations being high for all students, it is happening. Our students are growing. And we're super proud of them. When you look again at the typical growth, you're seeing how many students have met it. You're looking at the stretch growth, it is going down, but that's because they still have to learn those concepts in order to take. That third window will be huge for our Cascade View. All right, this brings us to our Swiss data. Swiss is the system that we use to input data to look at discipline. And we started off in twenty three, twenty four, and as you can see, the map points us down of where we are. This data for April is current as of last Friday. And as you can see, we have some months with higher referrals. The numbers are representative of commonly referral and having speed in the front office. And there is a direct correlation to maybe time between breaks, maybe transition time coming back from breaks. So you can see some of the numbers are higher in certain places. If we look at February, for example, we know we have the highest threat from midwinter break up to spring break. We had a hundred and ninety referrals during that time. Referrals can encompass any behavior or anything that could cause a disruption. That doesn't equate to that suspensions. It doesn't equate to maybe kids being out of school. But it does equate to referral that are written, that are sent to the office. I'm going to talk a little bit more about this and some of the support needs that we are looking and asking for from the district. One celebration, even though these numbers are high, if you look to the left side, is in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, for African American students. They represented sixteen percent of our school enrollment. And so eighteen percent of those students were receiving those referrals, which were two percent points higher than expected. And that is where that five percent came from in our school improvement plan. So we're looking to that data and see what are we doing? What's working, what's not working? This year, as of right now, Black African American students account for twenty percent of our school's enrollment. And they represent almost seven percent of students receiving referrals. Of course, we would like all students to receive your referrals, right? But the seven percent means that there are only thirteen percent points less than expected. Our goal was five, we're at thirteen. These percentage points don't come directly from me. Swiss has the calculation that they show. And then of course, there's other areas we look at, but right now we're sitting at thirteen percent less than expected. Our goal was five, so we're exceeding our goal of five percent. Now, that doesn't mean we're excited about that and wanting to be zero. We want all kids to make sure that we can problem solve, you know, in the best way we can. Retorted practices are important. But the data is showing that when it comes to African Americans, we see there are less referrals. But when you look at our overall data, there's a lot happening. So within the last month, I've given out behavior, or of course, updated our behavioral matrix, looking at our discipline flow chart, behavioral expectation, we're looking at including visuals. Some of these documents were created before I arrived here at Cascade View. So we're looking at updating and see what is, what's wrong? How do we fix it? Where do we go? What do students need? And so we do have a staff meeting this week. We will continue with that work because the referral that we received are high. And we are trying to problem solve to see, how do we make sure that when our students are here, they're able to learn? And then we think we'll need to make sure we're supporting them.
Second, curious, when you said you do a referral, so we had some reports earlier that was talking about offenses. I assume that's coming from Skyward. Does all this data go to Skyward? I'm trying to follow that.
So for Skyward, that is the data that goes into theater. So our major incidences will go into Skyward.
Okay, just the major one.
Just the major. So something that would be, you know, that we need to report or follow up with. So Swiss is going to take everything. But when you look at Skyward, you're not going to see a hundred and ninety February, you're not going to see thirty in September.
Okay, so this is anything from a student who was referred to how in the fashion to the office or something like?
Or to our social, mostly. Great question. Thank you.
Is, is there a pattern of cluster of what these referral report?
Yes.
I don't know. I didn't infer you see an object during the break, but. What is the, what is the path?
The pattern there, there's a lot of fighting. So students like not getting along, whether it may be verbal or physical. There's a lot of different things that encompass that throughout the day with our students and see they're experiencing things, whether it's social or emotional. But the offenses, they do range. So there are some clusters, but I will say they're, they're kind of spread out though. There's not going to be just one heavy cluster. If you want very specific data, I do have it on a spreadsheet I can forward and send it out to Dr. Pedroza or whoever.
Because I was, yeah, in my mind, I'm trying to interpret. Twenty percent of students that makes a physical sitting, so if it's fighting, it's the Black kids fighting the Black kids when we got two referrals. They said, what is, what is the referral analogy constructed? So I'm trying to figure out if you all are interpreting that bad and trying to, what's, what's not. But if, I'm curious in that discussion.
So our referrals have certain codes. The teacher's sending writer checks. Skyward has certain things that we have to classify them on. They don't always agree. And then Dr. Pedroza mentioned in the beginning, we would look at things like disrespect. Disrespect can look one way in one classroom and disrespect can look another way in another classroom. So sometimes they are being checked as disrespect and maybe it is disrespect. But then maybe it's a combination of a couple of things the kid has done. Maybe it's defiance, disrespect, and maybe fighting. So it is, that is a great question, but it is later based on interpretation, what some of the things may be based on who's writing the referral. And based on what actually was the behavior of the incident at that time. And we do have data that I have that can show you what it looks like, what, what are we written up for? Was it in the classroom, was it in the playground, was it in the cafeteria? But, and when it comes to fighting, it's not always the same, maybe Black students fighting Black students. It could be any issue.
So if I add up all the numbers, it's four hundred and ninety two, but are there some, I assume there's some students that probably get referred multiple times?
Yes, there are.
And so, yeah, I'm kind of interested. I mean, I assume we kind of look for that.
They have a pretty.
Yeah, I mean, none of these students showing, but yeah, and so figuring out, I mean, those students that you've got referred a lot, obviously, that's an early warning indicator. And, you know, if they're getting referred out of the same place all the time, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of information that, that you're working on.
No, great question. And it is. So when we look at Swiss, it is every single referral. And so there may be a student, they may have five or six, and maybe one student just happened one.
Right.
And we do make sure that we have what we need written up because in case there is another incident and we figure out if there is a pattern, we can say that this student was involved, how they were involved, how they weren't involved. So, but we also have that data sheet. And I can share that as well.
Do you have any, any idea about how many total students, though, this, like four hundred and ninety two referrals, but how many different students is that? I look at students there.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I do have, we do have a spreadsheet.
I understand.
No, I just don't want to misquote it, but I will tell you, it's not going to be four hundred and ninety.
Yeah.
Absolutely not. No, no, no.
Yeah.
You know, but we do have students that are showing the changes.
Right.
Things like that. They have multiple. So just two thoughts. One, I really appreciate this, it's the perspective kind of report that we've seen, that kind of like visual, crisis visual, so to speak. Thanks, thank you. And I appreciate the support around discipline. We've been having a lot of conversations about discipline. And I think one of the things that we've kind of asked is that the district really moved to really getting at some of the discrepancies in how we define, right? Or how we think about, and particularly the biases that come into play when we think about respect and disrespect and all of those things. So we've got a lot of stuff to do in District Y, but clearly y'all are having these conversations. I'm curious, like what, what had those conversations started to be like internally at Cascade View to really think about how y'all are reminding what those things mean and what the behaviors are that are actually associated with that? So that bias is minimal. One word, heavy. I know in the, when you talk about your agreements, it's about seeking your treatment, accepting comfort, discomfort, they're heavy and they're uncomfortable. Because teachers are doing the best that they can do. And some of them will need additional resources and tools for students. Our students have trauma. There are things that we need, as we know, Cascade View's enrollment jumped over a hundred students. I'm like four fifty nine, and there are some things that we need for social, emotional support, which I have my support needs too. It's not always easy because there are different thought patterns in how, what do we define as a sort of practices? What do we not define and how do we make sure that this is taking place or this is not taking place? They're not complete and they're not done. I don't have all the answers of principle, but I'm leaning into the work that's by the given staff. Oh, wow, there I have the given staff, the documents. So we can start to go back and update some of the things, like I said, that were here prior to me arriving. It's, it's not an easy conversation and I invite anybody that would like to come and be a part of this to profit from putting these concepts. I think we still have to look at how do we define certain words that we're using for our students, especially our students of color. Issue set looks different in different households, in different ways, for different reasons. Defiance looks different as well. And we know fighting is heavy, right? And we know drugs are drugs. But it's heavy and it's not, it's not a regular continuum, right? It's like this, because we all are still digging into, right, we have the anti-racism work, we're looking at equity, inclusion, belonging, which is part of our strategic plan. And so it's about having those conversations. We never want kids in the school, but sometimes they can get in the schools for certain things, right? If weapons or drugs are involved, in order to make sure that we can do a reset, make sure that students are safe, they are safe, their parents are safe. And we need to bring everybody back to the table and get them back to running as soon as possible. So it's a lot of work, but at the end of the day, we're, we're going in there and we're diving into it, but it is heavy work. But I think we need to be able to define some of these terms are on our referral to make sure we all have the same perspective, to make sure we're supporting students like completely in a consistent way. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to. Kind of, kind of, but that's okay. I think I totally understand why you chose to pull these numbers around Black African American students as it relates to the strategic plan. And I'm also like really curious around the impact and some of this with data related to our newcomer families. Because of course, like the, you know, as you pointed out, the trauma is still going to be different, right? And you result in, in some, some difficult challenging behavior or something. So I'd be curious to know. And I also like, I said, a lot of note that we all have seen before, and we can get that to Dr. Pedroza or you all as well. I just, I agree with that data as well. Attendance. Something we are super excited about, our students are showing up in here this year. Our, our attendance, overall attendance is ninety point four percent. Because you add the numbers up, it's not going to add to that, because we did have to look that off so I can make sure I got the presentation in and all that. But our students are showing up in each grade level. They're present. And we're excited about that because our kids' learning have to be here. And so when we look at overall our data, when we get our list of framework and everything, you can say that we know our kids are here. We would love it to be a hundred percent, but we know things happen. But that is a celebration that we have, that our students are coming in and they're here to run a few days.
I guess I want to ask a quick question, because I know there's, there's, there's two ways to kind of measure attendance. One is what percentage of the students are here on human data? And the other one is what percentage of the students regularly attend school? Which is regularly defined by the stages, you know, less than two passes. And those are two different numbers. And I'm, what I'm, what I've seen, I don't know if, so which one is this? Is this the, the numbers, the percentage of students who, you know, if you throw in a class of there's, you know, fifty, let's say it's like another fifty students and there's forty eight there, then what's ninety six percent? Is that the way you're doing?
That's the way it goes. We're not looking at what it's going to look like for them, which is when they're looking at the two absences. Right now, this is the straight dial.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to make the case, and I have a thought, that just the general, so the state has this concept of regular attendance. And so that particular method, what it does is it hides for students that are not attending regularly. Those students kind of get hidden in this, because that ten percent is at the same student. So is it a difference at all? So I guess I'm just, I'd just like to, for the district in general, it'd be nice if we could look at what the state calls regular attendance. Because that's, because, I mean, when we look at that here, for example, you know, all our school, and this happened, we'll talk a little bit more about it later, but you know, the stat was nationwide under COVID, we kind of, percent of students regularly attending went down significantly. And it happened in all our schools except for typical elementary, which stayed up. And I'd really been curious as to why, because all the other schools kind of went down that category. We were kind of up in this ninety percent and then down to sixty, you know, something. So and it's, it's nationwide, no, but anyway, that's just for future reporting of attendance.
I would, if we talk, I would be using for team to celebrate, let's say, celebrations as well.
Yeah, it's just a problem that kind of hides some of the.
Well, I think it can be both.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, the data. But, but, but two kids who may not regularly come to that fifth class, they're not hiding. Like that school, the class. They're dealing with their dad.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully you're aware of it, but I think it's a, it's a number that we need to reduce. Well, there's a difference with the number of the students that are missing more than, more than two. And we, I'm working on it, I need to prepare home, make sure I can.
Understand, my one question is, this is pretty good number. How do you get higher and what's too high? Because you can say ideally one hundred percent or a hundred, yeah. So what is, what solid ninety eight? And then what we put in place, what influences you have on improving? So, you know, it gets harder and harder to get closer to the goal, right?
I can't say, so Ms. Kathy Turner, who is a made being a supportee, making sure when students aren't here, we do have regularly, regularly monthly attendance meetings with her, the front office, office manager, Ms. Meyer, Ms. Allen Secretary, attendance, and myself, and then Ms. Tim, our social worker, where she did. Where she is on, in checking in the families. Every day, there is a certain timeframe for attendance to be done around by nine fifteen. Our front office is calling, where you can talk to the points, so families need to be able to communicate in a different language. Checking in on if students are coming, if there's an excuse, that's an excuse. But there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes, which every day one attendance is submitted, and then. When there are so many students that are for a long period of time, that's going, Ms. Kathy Turner, based on the communication, somebody from the front office receives and immediately catwalks. Students, you know, we've highlighted, teachers, they receive information from Ms. Kathy Turner, well, so that's what we do currently. When we are having high absences for students. There are some times students may not be in the building, as we know, people don't feel well. Also, uh, celebration, religious holidays and things like that. So that's why I appreciate your question, like, what's law solid and what's too high? Right, um, so that's a good question, what that percentage is, but I do know that Ms. Kathy Turner, who is an institutional, is helping support from the outside. And help us think about next steps and we have those reports.
And my last question is, do they have parents who you job to them that are surprised? Or is it all just part of the process of the damage?
I would say not the fact that elementary level, because there's little or little kids that are not fully skipping. Um, so they typically give us, right, information, doctor's appointment, not feeling well, or something that come up. We do have a lot of students now that are not living within, so maybe the district bounds, and so. They come, not necessarily to help us, maybe ever driven, so we have like the taxi in the first, they bring our kids to school or pick them up. So that also impacts attendance, or maybe when they arrive, or maybe they're present in their party, or maybe they're not here that day. Some of our families don't live within the couple, or they're, yes, some family, some of them Seattle, some family, some of them, some of them, some of them, some of them. But never surprised.
Yeah, it's interesting that, so the part that would need to have kind of, sometimes, I mean, we didn't have in this district, I think, but perfect attendance. Like, it's, it's encouraged, we can come every single time, and then COVID hit. And now, you know, we don't want students coming when they're, they're sick, so, so that cap is not gonna be a hundred percent anymore. We're gonna need somewhere down there a little bit, because we wanna, you know, make sure that, you know, not creating. But I know, it's interesting, kind of like you said, some of the other things, with a lot of different reasons why students need, and I know in the past. Sometimes we have, we have students that may not have a parent to get them going in the morning, and. I know sometimes the solution was give them a, a lot of, you know, maybe that's not like for some of our students. So each, each situation is different, and you have to, you know, kind of, you have to say dive into the each situation, so.
I want to just put, appreciate what you shared, and the fact that there is. And there are systems in place, accountability, point purchase, and reach out. And we can always reassess the system and how it works, and that's, that's reassuring, and as someone who's written in that. Uh, if you're looking for the record, sure, appreciate some respect for the work that you did, particularly around Rob, Rob, I don't care for attendance.
Uh, I was gonna say, it's commendable to keep going, although the high increase of student, the massive transitions. Uh, because some of our kids have moved to the town twice, especially from here, not just once. Um, and tracking all of that, and we ensure they're fed and welcome every day. And that they, they go smile in the basement, receive them every morning, so I just think. With all of the amazing shifts, if you had to. Wrap around, you can continually shift and shift and shift, um, the fact that it's to me, it's remarkable to you, and staff, so. I just want to say that.
Thank you, CD staff there, Rob, and so, not just me, we're team, but thank you all so much, yeah, thank you.
Uh, race equity, anti-racism, so this year, Dr. Pedroza was like, this is our call to action. These are some of the books that we are using, and, um. They have given us a lot of data, and I mentioned Dr. Roger Dorn, Dr. Pannau, I've been in a channel, working with leadership. And Cascade View, our two race equity leads, Teacher Hammond and myself, very, they have been very active with our staff in. Working with distorted circles, participating in the P S E S D in the evenings with district administrators. They recently talked with our staff about calling in versus calling out, and what that looks like, and that was so powerful, you know, there are times when things happen. And people feel called out, but it's about the power of calling in, making sure you're free and in a safe space for people to be able to learn and listen and be reflective. So, super, super, super duper kudos to our race and equity leads. Uh, the professional development this year, we have six Smart Wednesdays, and the free for the building, we utilize the Long Partners, which. The districts have some place for us, thank you so much. And as you can see, that's Mr. Aaron there, and he has, um, Safe on the Long, I'm out of reaction, we have our previous, you know, I wear it. And so we've utilized the three days we had to make sure that we continued with our, all the, all the actions for our race equity and anti-racism. And then the books that we're looking at, we have right there, and Dr. Roger Dorn, Dr. Pannau's book, The Black Educational Leadership from Silent and Profitability. Has given some great talking points and next steps, and what does it look like, and making sure that we are incorporating, um, staff and collaborative decision-making next steps. And the work that's ahead of us, because the work doesn't end, it's ongoing, you just don't get. Every day, you're striving to be better, to learn, and to grow and be reflective. Our support needs, okay, yay, traffic, everybody, Cascade View. Around this missile revival, you are not gonna find a parking spot, we are not gonna get in, and you're not gonna get out, stay with the type of great day, you got forty-five minutes to bring it, right? Our traffic, we need and believe. Chief Whitlock has initiated a mental in sending emails to the Tofolo Police Department and casting for help. I have presented before the board at least three times about traffic at Cascade View. The concern is about safety. If you are on our main street of Cascade View, which is, um. Just. You'll notice there is no school zone, there is no link or whatsoever that you can, if you are coming to a school. Our school zone that Cascade View are located within the neighborhood further back. So once you pass that point, if you're not thinking about it, you're not thinking about it. We need to have a school zone that is within our main street of where we are in location. And it's scary because sometimes your driver be like, oh, I'm at school. Right? When you go past softer, show water to a pool or a corner, you know you are in a school zone. You have speed bumps, you have flashing lights, you have some crosswalks, it's, you know, Cascade View doesn't exist. If we think about our cross street, which is South one thirty-sixth street, there is no yield sign and no stop sign. This is something that the city is aware of. I've met with the city, I think, Ms. Liliana and Ms. Kelly three times. War shape was a part of me, and I just looked at, like, it's also had some of that communication, uh, Dr. Herning was aware of it. And every time they come out, they're like, there's no stop for yield sign, and I'm like, yeah, and that's a major cross street, because once our kids cross over, they have to cross again. And so these are some of the things that our school does that we need. We are worried about safety. We have, um, traffic that flows against traffic that parks along the wrong side of the road. We have a lot of drivers that use colorful, which is not school approved. Um, and so when it comes to support needs, if we can find a way to do things to identify that people are in a school zone and just slow down. We would appreciate it. There are just so many close calls with our families and our students. We have safety patrol out there, and I always am worried for them. Some people don't even like to stop when they put their stop signs out. We as staff, not allowed to do the traffic. But you know, if you're sitting out there, I don't have someone to make you, right, to the side, right, because I'm worried about the safety of our community. So I invite everyone to come see if that arrival is typically anything like that. But we just need to make.
I'm trying, you know?
Yep, we try. We need something for people to slow down, um, and I know Dr. Pedroza had an idea as well about buses and maybe help. She's talking about, with me about.
We need to, to the staff, maybe a different, you know, so that, because we can't control. We, we have to work with the city, that's what, you know, in partnership, they have a, they have a process. What kind of safety can we look at, maybe bus, and if they're in a worried park and maybe change some walk pattern, we're just looking. Good needs, that, but that, it's not gonna solve everything, but especially not gonna solve the adults who are not listening and following the directions of the school, so. It's something, well, we're not.
And so what we do on our end is we do set up communication, I sent out communication last week, even on our electronic. It allows it to be transferred in the hundred foot line, which is to remind people about our P visible columns. I know some of the signs we have from the district aren't really big. I thank, um, Stelliana for the installation of stop signs on the property that helps a little bit, as people are leaving the interim. But we need something to identify with the safety of our learning community. Our other four schools, all are marked, you all know you're in a school zone, but here, Cascade View, you do not have that. Um, F E L screener, F E L P D, that's all about next steps and what we're looking at, making sure we're supporting our staff and our students. For social emotional learning, and our strategic plan, we'll talk about any of these, and talk about those areas. So last year, the plan was to have a district F E L screener, didn't come through this year. So we're looking at, are we gonna have one? If we're not, then I can start looking at, what could I do? Maybe there's a grant I can apply for, for us to make sure we have that. Um, the purpose for last year was about community, so all kids, no matter what profession, staying communication. We did start off with Ruler a few, few years ago, but that's kind of tapered out. Um, P B I S has been on the table, but that goes into the F E L P D, what does that professional development look like? Whether it is Ruler, whether it is P B I S. So back to Director Uper's comment, that we're making sure that we have that same language, we can make sure that, you know, we're, we're saying what we're saying, we mean what we mean. How do we know if the system's working? Is it us? Are we writing too many referrals? Are we, right? All those things, I think, when it comes to the F E L screener and F E L P D are huge. Because then I'm looking at our members and what, what we have for Swiss. And I believe when we have that community, then we can start to really dig into, um, what students need in supporting learning.
Quick question on that, so I know we've used, um, part of Long Partners, as you mentioned, around the social and F E L P D. Um, uh, so when you think about like what your needs are, what your hopes are for that? Is it something different from the Long Partners? Is it, like, I guess, how has that professional development supported y'all's, uh, learning versus like what maybe is missing? That we can make sure that we, that we, right, still let down?
Perfect segue back into time. So, um, yes, we need more time. Like I said, the building's had three P D days. So having that time, belonging partners are gonna be, they come in, they try to come in, you know, throughout the day or maybe in the morning. But having that time is what we need for belonging partners to be, you know, be able to be more in the building. Because three days, all of a hundred and eighty bits is so quick.
Yeah.
Right? So they get to come and touch on some things, and things are powerful, and. Do staff laugh, and some staff have reflections, some staff have great questions or follow-up. But if we think about the days, it's ninety minutes, so we get ninety minutes returned in here with, um, belonging partners, where we are all together, right? Now, of course, we can invite them in more, but that means teachers will be giving us time outside of their day. So that's why time is on there, which is huge. People can have collaboration, and time for planning, and time for lessons, lessons, they need time. But so maybe sit back and just take a deep breath. So what does that time look like for our teachers and our staff, our E S P D? Currently, right now, our E S Ps, they don't participate in that P D, because their day is structured differently from ours. So, um, I hear that a lot from staff, is need the time, what is the time look like? And I know, um, that's a lot, and I know it's heavy, but, um, that's where we are, looking at the time. We have the times, and I think the thing that belonging partners does well, because they do amazing things. I think, again, we'll become full circle, and then it will fall into the sales screen or the sales committee, we have that issue.
Does, come back, that's.
Well, they have a F E L screener.
Is that, are you talking about something different from the thing?
Well, Thorndike had one that they did, but the district was gonna decide on what one they were gonna use, and that's. And if we're gonna end up with Thorndike, it's great, but we were waiting for that decision.
Well, actually, we're, we're pioneering, and we're thinking of a decision for district-wide, between the ones, one and screener. And that's part of, actually, the kind of recommendation from the M C S S committee that is working on that, they're gonna make the recommendation, which comprises of staff. Uh, staff members, and district members as well, but they're only working, which is the one screener district-wide. That, so that's been the process of discovery this year.
Okay, and then, I, okay, um, and the little substitute, so I think I have a few specialists in the building today, and we will substitute this page. So what happens is, um, when there's not a substitute, we have to call them, specialists or interventions to cover. And what that means, those students don't get that opportunity to have that run, whether it's for the C lab, whether it's music, whether it's P D. Or, uh, whether it's for library. Math interventions, as well as our review interventions are impacted. And so I don't know what this looks like, I don't know what to ask, it's gonna be, I do have an idea. Um, of what we possibly could do, but this is impacting the learning of our kids, it's impacting the teaching. So if they have to get all to cover. That means they're skipping that group of kids until they see them the next time, which means now they have to play catch-up with that group. When the other maybe two grade levels in the section are going for, they see them. So they're constantly having to replan, reteach, go back, they can get here, skip here, skip there. And then it takes away the equity and the amount of time that those students are in that classroom. So if there's a steam lab lesson plan. If Ms. Lappin has to be full, she can't teach that particular class, or maybe class is becoming, but so, you know, half a full day. So now that new rotation has to stay where they are, where the others go, so it's playing catch-up. And so our children, we see out of that enrichment. Um, I, I'm a child of the art and ammunition, and, you know, music is where some of our kids are gonna drive, some of our kids are artists, and our kids are gonna be the scientists. And they're missing out on those opportunities because of the annual substitutes. Now, I say this to say also that our human resource department, they've called out, they have been amazing. In support and trying to get a substitute, so I know the district has raised out and put substitute. I know that they host when jobs are open, they send out verbal phones, I know they're respecting what they did. So I definitely need a shout-out on the Street of God, as well as Ms. Miller, as well as Mr. Ron. They call at front office to, to let us know if we can pivot someone. So they have been instrumental in also being very supportive, and then little substitute doesn't just impact Cascade View. I know that Mr. Pyle has spoke about it as well, saying it affects all of our buildings. And so, um, but I don't, I would be remiss not committing the work that H R is doing, because H R is an invaluable work in trying to get it to cover. I just want to bring it to the forefront on the impact that it has on what we learn from our teachers. It also impacts the classroom teachers as well. That is the time that they have their planning, their individual planning time. So if their specialist is canceled, they don't put it individual planning time during the day. Which mean they're with their kids through that portion of that forty-five minutes. So it impacts the specialists, it impacts the classroom teacher, it impacts the school. So what is this, like, ongoing impact? It then impacts the day, right? But not everybody's figuring out, where do I teach, where do I plan, where do I do this? So I just wanted to make sure I bring that to all the attention, if you have any questions, let me know, but these are some of our big areas for some of our support that they have a problem with.
Let me, let me notice, uh, what's the trend in terms of the need for subs, is the number of substitute days that are needed, is, are they going up?
Yeah, it's, it's one up, it's high.
And do you have any sense of why they're, why they keep going there?
I don't have a sense of why, um, I can just say, you know, we know things happen, right? People have appointments, people maybe just need a day off. Maybe, you know, people are, you know, pivoting between things, I think it'd be a combination of things, um, honestly. Okay, our celebration, I'll go quick. Uh, partnership enrichment, uh, I have their logo up here. These are amazing, amazing, amazing people that support us, are working what we do. Every day, we so appreciate each and every one of them, Disney musical Lion King, second year visiting, last year was a Latin. Definitely have to shout out everyone that was a participant, I don't remember names, Trowbridge, Ms. McLean, uh, Ms. Meyer, Ms. Mercado. Mr. Michael, it was so many people, the production was great, the kids were fantastic. We so, 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 so love to see the talents of our kids that come for during these times. The Seattle Jazz, uh, performance, they came in for Black History Month, Mr. Michael Balken in. Kids got up and they sang, and it was just amazing, they learned so much about history. Arvita, um, I have to shout out, E L L T, Ms. Reader, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Alada, um, Ms. Vina. They were amazing, and texting the kids, the planning, everything, getting it done, they rocked it, it was such a celebration. Fall and spring conferences, families coming in, learning about their students' goals, students sharing their work, teachers making this connection. So, uh, shout out to not just staff and our families and our learning community for being present. Attendance, once again, I talked about it, I'll skip over that. Our Madeline Lee Simmons Award recipient, we had one last year, we also have another one this year, Teacher Hammond is our recipient. So we celebrate Teacher Hammond, and being the recipient of that award. Our Cascade View P T O has been amazing, um, they have put on some great things, from bingo nights to movie nights. To recently with the spirit here, spirit where for staff and families to purchase. We have Ms. Blankhead, I think you may be here somewhere, we have Ms. Damon, um, up there, there's some plane, I mentioned, there's some planes named, uh, Ms. Ray. They have just been phenomenal in making connections, the meetings are awesome, they give the agendas, they give the follow-up. I can't do it all, I just so applaud, and everything that they do, and everything they bring to the table. Our new playground is coming this summer, the Playground Community, wanna shout them out for that, our kids have had new updated safety structures. And last but not least, our dual language in our whole classroom. We finally opened kindergarten classroom, and we look forward to the first grade classroom opening next year. And so these are just some of our celebrations that we have at Cascade View, we're super, super excited about, I'm talking back, I know it's been a minute, I'm trying to get us through.
Talking back, I know it's been a minute, I'm trying to get us through. Um, and I guess this brings us to the end. And that's a picture of our kids at the dress rehearsal here. Oh, Ms. Salisbury, didn't shout her out, Ms. Salisbury, uh, dress rehearsal for Lion King that they put on for the students. And I said, super excited. And if I could just have a couple of quick moments, I just want to make sure that we recognize and shout out a couple of weeks ago. It was classified appreciation week. So just saying that we appreciate all E S Ps, they are amazing. They do the work sometimes and we don't even see the running team. So shout out to them. Uh, also want to make sure I shout out teacher appreciation coming up to all the teachers that rocks are. So shouting them out. And if I can just, um, have a quick second, I just would love to recognize Mrs. Goldson, if I may, really quick. Um, Mrs. Goldson is that there and she is our assistant principal. Oh, there she is. She is our assistant principal, I hope you want to come up or not, for all three elementary schools. And she is amazing. And about two weeks ago, no, yeah, about two weeks ago, it was National Assistant Principal Week. And I just want to thank them all for the appreciation, the work is done. Over forty years of experience in education. I appreciate, um, the joy and the great platform offered. I appreciate your intelligence and your wisdom. And I just would have been remiss if I didn't get an opportunity to shout her out. Uh, and I know you all have some tough decisions ahead of you all, as a lot of the words do. And I just want to say that, um, educators, this has been a tough year. And I think anyone that's in education would say that. And this year has bought joy. It has bought, um, a lot of reflection and a lot of growth. And I just want to say that as a principal, the job is not, it's not just what you see in the book, right? Um, we're there for our people, that's what we can. And I believe I can even speak for my other fellow principals at the elementary level is this year with our involvement. Uh, fluctuations and resources that we have and that we're asking for. We are doing the best we can to support our learning communities. And our job is to make sure that teachers can teach and kids can learn and to make sure that parents don't want to drop their students off. Their kids having management and they're learning and you're excited. Uh, what I will say about this year, this year has bought a lot to, I think, every building and even you all as well. There have been, um, loss. To me personally, I lost a parent this year. I know I've had staff members that have lost people. There's been a lot of trauma. There's been a lot of, um, moments of concern. And staff are doing the best they can. They show up every day and they get everything they got. And so I just hope that at the end of the day, staff feel appreciated and staff know that we see them and we hear them. And I just wanted to thank you to all side of the table. So thanks for being these happy people. Ask those our questions here. Um, thank you so much. All right, um, so that brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting. Um, so, uh, as a reminder, there are multiple ways over which you can provide public comments. If you're a person that would like to do that, uh, there's a sign up sheet at the front. Um, please do come in and also take this opportunity, if you've not yet signed in, just as being here at the meeting. Um, please do that. It's really important, um, again, to kind of be compliant with our meeting requirements. Uh, so please come and sign in. And if you'd like to have a public comment, there's a separate sheet for that. If you're joining us online, um, you can raise your hand or tag your name in the chat to offer a public comment. All right, um, so, uh, if you could still sign up for any person public comment, I would have to get a copy of every video that. Um, but, uh, first is going to be Cindy Goldson.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Um, good evening. Uh, it's a little bit bittersweet here right now. My name is Cindy Goldson and it is Cindy with a Y for everyone who likes to ask that question. So, uh, want to clarify that. I'm here to supervise you with information regarding the recent elimination of physician as a elementary assistant principal for the three elementary schools in the Tuckville School. The perspective I will be taking with my comments is one through the lens of intent and impact. This lens is the one that administration and all staff have been invited to utilize and work on as we interact with one another. In essence, it encompasses the need to be aware that no matter what or how good the intent of the communication or decision. The impact on the receiver should be taken into account and be accounted for. First, I will start by disclosing that my speaking tonight is not to appeal for the biggest statements of the elementary assistant principal position. I understand fully the circumstances the district finds itself in and these kinds of decisions do need to be made. That being said. While the intent is to bring the district into a better state of solvency. The impact to me has been emotionally and physically draining for the last four weeks. I've lost sleep, became anxious about my family's financial future. Spent countless hours seeking out availability and cost of changing and accessing health insurance and healthcare providers. Contemplating potential relocation and its costs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All the while, coming to work with a smile and optimistic attitude. While the intent of the decision was sound. The impact for me of the decision making and delivery process has led to a huge, just, just a huge sense of disappointment. In district leadership and has resulted in me losing considerable amounts of joy and work. That I am currently engaged in and have experienced over the last few years. At this time, it appears that the three principals that I've worked with were not consulted. And I was never asked to talk to decision makers regarding the full spectrum of work in my assignment. And provided with instead a letter that seemed to say, sorry, it's not you, it's us. And if a suitable job comes up, we'll let you know. In addition, I have yet to have district level administration intentionally, intentionally inquire. Or communicate with me as a follow up of my termination. While the intent of the timing was probably felt to be early enough to allow me ample time for job searching. The impact was that it occurred just two weeks after my sixty second birthday. A significant number in the world of career decision making. Just as the numbers ten, thirty, sixty five and sixty seven are, depending on when one can or desires to retire. This in and of itself should have been taken into consideration. So that it didn't feel as if I received a subtle invitation to step aside. In addition, the date of March twenty six, twenty twenty four was also the day that this school board voted on an extended contract and full title of superintendent to Dr. Pedrosa. And while I am not begrudging her achievement, it just adds a little firmness to my termination. While I am sure the intent of the decision making process was done with minimal people in order to save others from feeling the full impact of the decision. The impact is that it is a decision that will affect to a large extent my fellow elementary education administrators next year. Each will have to assume approximately forty additional hours devoted to I E P evaluation. Planning and I E P development meetings to ensure that all preschool and elementary students specialized education plans are in place. In addition, and another ten, another estimated ten to fifteen hours for each principal will need to be devoted to parent educator support. Goal setting, observations and evaluation completion. Depending on E S P openings available, an additional five plus hours per vacancy will be needed to go through the hiring process. This year, I live with no less than ten vacancies. I was also part of a group who provided training for E S P parent educators through the required fundamental skills course. Which will need to be picked up by someone else, as well as the twenty five days of being a principal designated for the principals, some that were planned and others that were not. In addition, there are a multitude of other smaller job duties and daily happenings that fell upon me. And these will still demand building administrative level decision making and supervision. Making, uh, to ensure all students are provided with adequate safety, social emotional security and academic progress. Yes, the intent of downsizing is inevitable. However, the very real emotion and physical impact that it creates in the receiver of being left go or ripped should be one of the big rocks. And priority management with all administrators as downsizing begins for real. As I continue to live with the impact of downsizing, I'm looking forward to finalizing my next steps. Which includes networking at the A W S P A summer conference for potential employment opportunities. As I begin the beginning of my end at T S D. I want to thank all my fellow district principals, all the principals. Each of you are leading in the moment while continuing to look to the future. I believe in you and the positive impact that you provide to all students. Another set of people that has been very much appreciated over the years for their leadership and support is the human resources department. Mr. Aaron Drogoff, Ms. Sally Jerome, Ms. Ellen Gaylor and Ms. Alicia Scott. I wish you the best and you will be in my thoughts as you leave the district in personal matters the rest of this year and into next. Last but not least, a most heartfelt thank to you, Dr. Framstead and Ms. Meyer for being there. In our most joyous, our most frustrating and most humorous moments every day all year. My final thank you is given to my family and support system, my husband Steve and the three blessings of my life, James Marai and Josh, Josh Emmane as Goldson. For joining me in this trip to Seattle and now places unknown. Thank you for my time here at T S D. I wish you well and, uh. I'll see what happens, uh, as I start telling people more outwardly and a more public manner. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Angela Meyer.
I don't know if this is going to get me called into the office again, but I sit before the board frustrated, disappointed and angry. I understand that cuts need to be made, but the decision to cut the only assistant principal shared by three elementary schools. Showed the nasheance of the board on the importance of Mrs. Goldson to the three elementary schools. I want to give you a glimpse into the day of an elementary school. But before I go further, I want to explain that Mrs. Goldson only has one designated space, which is a castle field. For the six years, she has been split between three elementary schools. She has had to work out of storage closets, hallways or other spaces she has had to seek out. When she has a space and sets herself up for the day. If she leaves, she may come back to find herself packed up, put in a chair and wheeled onto a hallway. The lack of respect that has, that she has been shown as an assistant principal has been horrible. A typical day in an elementary school, we start out with the call from transportation regarding a problem on a bus. And they ask them for someone from the front office to meet the bus. Depending on the issue, it might lead to an investigation or at the very least, speaking with the student or students about their actions. Parents sometimes angry, having to speak with an administrator regarding a problem. Which again, may lead to an investigation or pulling students to speak with them. We get calls in classrooms for support if they have a student that is not being safe. This could be anything from yelling to throwing things to biting or hitting. Once a student is in the office, the administrators will speak with the student or students to determine the next steps and parents will be contacted. In between this, the office is fielding phone calls, writing the target slips and making sure classroom attendance is done. Once all attendance is in, we start making contact with those students that are unexcused. Our recesses began at ten forty five A M. and our first lunch starts at eleven A M. With our last lunch ending at twelve thirty five P M. We can have students fighting either on the playground or in the lunchroom. Again, depending on the severity, this can lead to investigations. But we'll always want administrators speaking with students and parents. We not go into P M recess and again, there are fights that happen. We are still receiving calls from classrooms for support, answering the phones at the door, getting students from class that are leaving. And if there is no help room support, we are also acting as nurses. Simply speaking with students takes, takes time. Investigations can take an entire day or multiple days. Helps the parents take time. There are very often days when we look at the clock and it's two P M. or later and we haven't had a break. This is not account for the meetings that building administrators are required to attend, not including I E Ps. Last year, Mrs. Goldson attended over a hundred and fifty I E Ps, a hundred and fifty. These meetings can take anywhere from a half hour to an hour, sometimes longer. In October, all employees certified and classified are required to have goal setting meetings. Principals are required to observe all certified staff in the minimum of twice per year. In May, they must conduct summative conferences with all certified staff. And if these are not completed on time, principals can be fired. All classified staff receive end of year evaluations. Mrs. Goldson took on all of the classified staff goal setting meetings and evaluations in each of the three elementary schools. And still does the majority of those meetings. With the elimination of Mrs. Goldson's position, elementary principals are now responsible for all required classified and certified observations and evaluations. I E Ps, discipline, parent complaints on top of the required meetings. How? Are you expecting them to work twenty four seven? Let's also remember that this opens them up to being grieved by staff because they are not able to get everything done. Principals are supposed to give grace and understanding to staff that they are not afforded the same grace and understanding by some of the same staff. What I don't see is district administration buildings for extended amounts of time to see what we deal with on a day to day basis. Yet the expectation going into the next school year is to have one. One elementary principal to maintain and to everything with no support. The relational trust between district administration and the schools is non-existent. And I'm truly concerned for next year. How many times has district administration gone home and cried because of fights? Or because of the blatant disrespect of students? Or because we are being pulled in so many directions that we don't have time to breathe? I don't think district administration, along with some staff, know what the front office says every single day. The negative and disrespectful attitudes we have to deal with from every direction. Yet we are expected to maintain our smiles and professionalism. I made a statement to the board in November about concerns regarding some of our programs. And unfortunately, there hasn't been any change. In fact, it's gotten worse. We have five schools in our district. We are not Kent or Highline or Seattle. We don't have teams. We don't have multiple deputy superintendents, nor do we have multiple assistant directors in each program. Our executive directors and directors are the team. I still haven't seen directors visiting programs for any length of time. Something has got to change. We are doing a disservice to our most vulnerable students and it's concerning. And once again, I am asking for support for Dr. Framstead. There seems to be a separate set of roles for her than there are for the other principals. She has been and continues to be subjected to things that the other principals are not. The absolute disrespect that she endured on a daily basis needs to stop. The false narratives continue. She is accountable to ensure we are doing everything we can to provide our students with the best education we can give them. Every decision that comes out of her office is always student centered. You don't have to like everyone or agree on everything, but we do need to respect each other as colleagues. I have raised concerns with district administration about some things that Dr. Framstead has been through this year. Yet I don't see anything being done. And so again, I am pleading with district administration to please support Dr. Framstead. And put a stop to the things that no other principal is being subjected to. And I would like to end with a shout out to Mr. Gayton Tierras, our district athletic director. He put together a team store for Cascade View that has T shirts, sweat shorts, slides, blankets, water bottles and phone cases. You're great, you gotta go to the website. I appreciate Mr. G, Mr. Gutierrez taking the time for this for Cascade View. And I would also like to extend an open invitation to our board members to visit Cascade View. And spend some time seeing what we've experienced on a daily basis. Thank you.
All right, next, um, and I apologize if you can, um, slowly make out, is it, is it Elu? Great, thank you. All right, next, and I apologize if I can't, is it Eliu? Great, thank you. I live in the community, and I also work here as a ELL E S D. I've been at this school about 27 years, started off as a janitorial parent, and now I'm in the ELL department. Cindy Goldstein, the team of writers, they wrote a beautiful letter about what they just talked about, who's a vice principal, and concerns and stuff, but I didn't write anything. I'm just gonna speak from the heart. So I have some concerns about the cuts that are coming up. It's gonna affect our school and our district. Then is why we are in this predicament due to the mismanagement of the funds in our, in our district public administration building over the years, which have put us in this predicament where staff are getting rid of it. This has happened over the years. So my concern is why for the families, the students, and the staff being punished for mistakes coming from the administration building over the years? It shouldn't have happened. We have new board members. Dr. Larson is the only, Director Larson is the only board member that has been in the longest. Director Simpson, Director Hoover, Director Popter, and now Director Kuler is joining. Very young, so they don't know what's been going on throughout the years in this district regarding budgeting. And now we have a new superintendent, Dr. Doza. So I was hoping, as you being new directors and a new superintendent, would really take a good look at what you're considering when it comes to cutting staffing from our district, the work that they have put in. It's not their fault that funding is that is in the red, that we're a negative due to certain people who may not be here. Some of them still be here, I don't know. But it's not fair. What's been affected are after-school programs for our students, community and schools. Mr. Ty, who works for our school, is amazing. He's brought many resources to our students and families that helps support our families that are at the hotels, at the church. He's amazing. This program is not the same cut. Our before-and-after-school programs for our students who need to have a place to go because their parents are working two or three jobs. Some of our parents are unable to pay for the before-school program, before-and-after-school program now that is not being funded by the district. So some of those parents, I have no idea what they're doing with their kids. But I gotta say that I've taken in some of those kids before school because I have a parent that is a single parent and has to be at work. So I come in early just to take in her kids so I can watch them and work with them, teach reading and math skills. While she isn't able to make it to her job, so she can put food on the table, make a rent, and make sure her kids are in a safe place. And this is something I'm doing because I care about our families and the students. Those are just a couple of programs that are being cut. I understand programs go first. Those are persons to be cut to the staff, which I totally understand. I just heard yesterday that Mr. Baker, our executive director of career technology education, data and technology, his position was also being cut. I just wanna share your history about Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker was our principal here at C D for over 10 years before he was moved to the tech department and became the director there in 2017. Since he's been there, he has put in the scene. He worked with the teachers at the high school committee to form the C T, the classes for our students. These are for our students who may not plan to go to a four-year, a traditional four-year college after high school, but this is to give them other skills that they may want to pursue after high school. He put a lot of work into that. Not only that, none of you guys work here through COVID except for Dr. Larson, I mean Director Larson, he's calling him Doctor. Mr. Baker and his team have worked very hard to make sure over 2,700 students in our district have their phone books to work remote. Make sure they have hotspots for our district or our kids and families so their kids can work, learn from home. Also helped with whatever complications teachers and administrators have with their computers working remote. These are many things that he has done over the years. He's been here, I think, 71 on 18 years, and to be given a notice that he is expendable after putting in all that time to this district. I remember him as a principal, first one in, last one out. He had a lot of integrity, worked hard. And I feel sad, a part of me that this is how we treat people that have put in their time and still continue to do that even though they've gotten a notice that they're gonna be ripped. It's not fair. I ask that you look at your decisions that you've made, reconsider some of these decisions that you've made because there are other positions that could that you can look at, risky. He's put in the time, other people have put in the time. Please reconsider some of the decisions you've made. All right, next we have, you're well.
Hi, this is Melissa Blanchett, and I have two students at Cascade View here, in the fifth grader and in the first grader. And I also have a three-year-old who will be coming into the district. My talking points are a little bit different. I'm coming from a parent perspective outside of the school. Dr. Framstead did cover plenty of the things that I did want to go over. I'm gonna start with safety outside of school, parking lot safety, speeding, not stopping across law. Last week, my three-year-old and I were walking home, and we nearly got hit by a car, and I had to pull my three-year-old back to me, and it was terrifying. And I live two houses down from the school, and it's daily, deeply that we are having these incidents happening outside of our school, and it's the safety of our kids, it's the safety of our parents, it's the safety of the kids that are out on the crosswalk doing crosswalk duty. Parents are parking in, sorry, I get very emotional. Parents are parking in non-designated areas. They're facing the wrong way. Walkers, walkers, the students that are supposed to be walking home, are being picked up in cars on the south end of the school rather than using the roundabout. Cars causing bottlenecking. Cars are parked in crosswalks, blocking the vision for the pedestrians that need to be able to safely cross in those spaces. The district is liable. The district is liable before and after school. And we need help. And I have gone to Dr. Framstead and I have talked to her. You know, I talked to Ms. Trowbridge, who was out there every morning. One person is not enough. Somebody is going to get run over. I watch it before and I watch it after school. And I don't want to wait for it to be one of our kids. That's the safety of the kids outside of school. Now I wanna talk about safety inside of school. There's fights, there's bullying. It's every day, and it's getting on the hands. Safety on the buses has become a concern. There's a lack of support for the teachers in the classrooms. Staff cuts are going to make it worse, taking away the resources that the teachers and the students have is not the answer. It's absolutely going to make it worse. The teachers, the resources that are needed at our school. I can't speak for the other schools. I think what's going to our, our students and our staff. As a parent that has kids moving through the district, I don't want to send my kids to school. My fifth grader will be homeschooled. She will not continue. I, as a parent, feel like that is a failure from higher education. And I'd like to see something changed. I want, as a parent, to be able to send my kids to school and feel like they're going to be safe. In the past, I have met with district leaders, Dr. Herden. It was lip service. I got a lot of talk and no action. And I know we have new board members sitting in front of me, and I would challenge you guys. Help our school so that our kids can be safe, so that our staff has the support that they need. Don't take away the resources from Cascade View where the numbers don't lie. They're absolutely needed. But I got for you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Okay, throughout that time, I did not see any hands raised online, so we'll go ahead and mark a public comment. Unfortunately, I think everyone who offered something during that. Okay, so now we move to our report portion of the agenda, beginning with our student representative and then our superintendent.
So again, we're, I mean, the two that I was, the two representatives and this month, we had our first superintendent advisory committee introductory meeting, which is basically just a committee, committee for students to get together and come up with ideas and voice their concerns with the sound of the public for them to recommend to take action to superintendent directly. And in this meeting, we, we got a great turnout, some very diverse students from different schools and other than around maybe 15 students, because it's better than just me and Dennis. For the play in my presentations at the school, it's more diverse voices. And some of the discussion topics we talked about were discussions on anti-racism. We touched on the topic of cultural community and the ways that they are pointing at cultural, cultural community needs potentially with diverse backgrounds. And we did talk about the importance of education and collective against taking action against racism. And there were few students that actually had examples of racism in this school. Like, I remember students talked about it, it's a principle that happened at the beginning at Chilwell's Middle School. Our, our students. So we did have an action, action item that was established that addressing prevents microgressions through education and policy adjustments. And the meeting concluded with a strong commitment for all members to advocate for positive change, more interventionism, and enhance the overall school environment through intentional action. The next steps involved in implementation of discussed actions and continuing with education for whole district leadership to monitor. And our next meeting is a total model, and we will be having community discussions and goal-setting for the next year for this meeting. And, well, actually.
I was gonna shout out to, I wanna say about that student adventure that was just, I impressed, I felt. Then again, just wanted to talk about that. Anyway, happy end, getting close to the end of April. We got our, we got our spring break this month, though I hope so much we get rest for everybody. Just to update quickly on the building closure, the district administration officially opened. And we opened the day after a break, and we moved in or now we're unpacked, but customer service and all of that, we are there. So we are still working on just unpacking and getting everything settled. I have a comp update just to let everyone know, and has been one fixable eight. I will be taking it back on June 6th, which will allow us to obtain a snuff ethanol friends without the provider's prescription. So that's something we're working on. And then right now, we're trying to increase in contact with fashion condition, about one or two cases in each classroom. So there was one case of babies in one of our school, a T P guy. I'm just letting you know, okay, all the parents. I know, but that is the school, you guys. That's school life, right? That's school life. I was a principal fifteen years. That is the school life. A parent has a state medication and and regarding exposure and our health team is amazing. They continue to monitor, they continue to work with public health. So just wanna make sure that we do have support, faith, and coordination that happens here. Just Rachel, I think the principals and the educators met last week. Because next steps for the school improvement planning process is going to be for 2425. Current practices right now, discipline goals and professional learning. And they're starting to make plans for the next year. And then the district administration all met with the principals and all the district administrators to look at charter pool areas for the followings here. And then also, one of the things that we heard, which was interesting, is we really realized scenarios, like situations, and we practiced through that to have that common language about, so how do you address certain things, how do you lean into these conversations, which was something that the team asked for, and so they're gonna practice on real situations that happen and how we practice our those courageous conversations in real time is what they did work through on. So I'm just a quick other updates. I just wanna thank all the staff that created that e-off celebration that was celebrated last week at Shaw Walter. It was breaking. We have so many families. There's all the students there. It was wonderful to see all of the students in engagement, prizes. A shout-out to Zia Ramizi. He is the family community liaison that supports our Afghan students. He has been leading Afghan refugee events. I mean, he had one last week and this week. The other, we have hopefully helping, supporting, but that's been led by him in the theory of the Afghan refugee grant we have. And so he's been doing that work, and then the last one was this Thursday. I just wanna thank Principal Parker and Principal Christopher and City of Philadelphia Chief Driver. They met. I hope you can, I won't, I won't, I won't, the name of the president is officially signed by everybody. So they had a planning meeting to talk about those conversations that are happening with our student groups So they had a planning meeting to talk about those conversations that are happening with our student groups to have conversations with the current SROs that have been hired and to make sure that we have the right fit in all of our schools. And then after those conversations, they have a planning meetings that to talk about how to enter, enter in all the SROs into spring and then moving into fall. So I want to thank Principal Parker for leaving those efforts. And then those conversations are actually happening this week. The superintendent, student advisory council, they met, they're planning. I know Alex and Dan have been planning. But then I expect they have a lot of asked for interesting meeting and I'll be, they are leading the work we all. They're leading, they're having all the, I think I said in the, I haven't remember. They are leading, they're directing, they're having the conversations, they're modeling. They have been phenomenal. You could just see them, they're fantastic. It's amazing. I want to thank all the folks that have been intentionally working on the multi legal learning lab. Those are K A general education and multi legal teachers coming together to focus on ethnic instruction and supporting our multi legal learners. So that picked off this week at Foster. We have two more sessions to go. And then just to share, we participate in the Mufflet Shoot Regional Consultation Process that's related to title grants. And so we are meeting with them next week. I'll present the goal for the type of, and I'll just share openly where two goals are really making sure that this district wide, this is kind of memorial in all of our schools, which is a state mandated requirement. It's a, it's a, it's a Native American led curriculum that's been approved by the state. And then thinking about authentic engagement for our Native American families along to the policy that we got, the way you did that. Just everyone else tomorrow's early release day. It's getting out early, so those of you, who you all know, and then happy administrative professional day to Angela and to Ben, who are actually current to everybody else who does great work with our community. And then to put on their calendar, May twenty one, we have our staff appreciation happening at Foster High School. So put that on your calendar. It's nice. So our staff appreciation for all the staff that inject their marks in terms of the work. And in the weekend of May twenty fourth to the twenty sixth, Foster High School, the production of the Lightning Thief. It's a musical and it's a, it's the Percy Jackson musical. And also we can be announced on the rearwards and we have another seven as well, but those are two events coming up because we don't have our full schoolwork meeting until the end after those events. It was so difficult. Put them on the calendar and I know they would appreciate. And by the way, the line thing was amazing. The kids were amazing. So that's all I have. Any questions? All right, we'll start as we're close, as we're close to the end of the episode.
Second call on Bud. I guess on the line thing, I went to that. So to share for the first year, it was actually the end of this forum, which increased the, you know, it had a different sound system and the lighting system. And the students got to perform on the big stage and it was pretty amazing that they just stayed excited in the room. There was tons of people from the families and parents and friends and everybody. The excitement level. I think, you know, we're coming, coming back from COVID, these time activities are things that just, you know, unify the community in ways that you can't do any other way. Just looking at the faces of the students when they finished the actors, it was pretty amazing. Because it gave them, you know, they built up this confidence, you know, to be on the stage in the country where we're standing ovation and everything. So it just for me kind of solidifies the importance of the arts in terms of particularly students' mental health. We know that coming back from COVID, there's a lot of issues about how to, you know, relate to each other and all that. And this kind of activity that just is really, really great and all that. So congratulations, I mean, all the, the staff at Cassidy do a fantastic job and putting it all together. It's very professionally gathered. Good job all that. I was over last Friday and Saturday, I was over in Spokane working on the, the School Directors Association Legislative Committee. So, you know, we're not the only district that's, that's grappling with these really hard financial issues. There's, and so it's really important to get all kind of all the districts, many of the districts down the state that are working on this issue to go, really have paid strongly with the legislative next year to increase funding for education. So, yeah, it's just, it's, it was encouraging because there's a lot of folks, you know, all kind of coming together around this. We're gonna have to make a, a big concerted push because we didn't really get much last year in the, in the fourth session. But next year is going to be what they call the budget year for the two year budgets. And so that's when significant dollars can flow if, if we get the, we get the advocacy right. So, yeah, that was happy to move that work along and I've kind of become known as equity person in that group. Everybody kind of gets me about it. But, you know, there's one thing to fund everybody kind of aptly, as the constitution says, but the other big part of it is to fund equitably and push a lot more money to where the needs are. And obviously our district asking you and all their schools and their districts are, have a lot of needs that, you know, need to be funded well above, you know, the, the world here, our, the state. So hopefully we're able to make some, some progress on that. And the other thing that I found kind of interesting, there was a New York Times article this last month about attendance. So, you know, committed to really put a gamble on attendance to make the public schools nationwide. It's not, you know, we have some, some downturns in some of our attendance and, but it's not just us. The state went down, the country went down. And, you know, trying to kind of recover from that is going to be a challenge for us all, which is kind of one of the reasons I'm really excited about things like the line thing. That kind of, we need to kind of bring everybody back together in ways that they haven't been, they haven't been for a number of years. And so it's, you know, there's, there's definitely correlations between, strong correlations between attendance and academic performance, which is no big surprise that the students are not traveling school. We can't, you know, have the quality instructional practices that we're given. So it's going to be, I think, really important to continue to work on. And I think it's, like I say, it's, it's a statewide national issue that to work on attendance and get, get students back. And it's going to be definitely tough because of a lot of cuts in funding, as was mentioned here tonight. You know, I mean, a lot of these things require banking more money. And so we really need to go down to invite everybody to go down and talk to your legislators and, and because they're the sources of our money. It kind of supply everybody, but board doesn't decide how much money to get. The legislature decides that. And it's, they're, they're allocating not enough and they're not even close to allocating it equitably based on student fees. So, anyway, that's it.
Oh, please report one. All right, head up to me here, that's debut. Thorndike, all over to the, to the library. But I want to circle back. Just address the American. I'm not sure what you all think we do. But when it comes to navigating the budget, eighty-two percent of the budget, eighty plus percent of the budget is steps out. But I keep hearing this narrative of irresponsibility, like somebody went to Vegas with the school district budget. That's not how this works. I'm new. I looked at the numbers, looked at who we are, we have financial officers. That's not what's happening. That's not what's happening. Question was, how many of you all sat up all night? I have. Are we going to get this right? Listen, we're from this community. There's no us against them dynamic. I'm in here because of trying to figure out, I was asked, could we help? Could we bring what we've already invested in this community to this challenge? So I'm not sure. I just want to address that. I mean, there's other reports and I just want to address that. I'm not sure where you're getting the information from. These are all hard decisions. And all of that is taken into consideration. And however it's effective, it will affect and impact all parties involved. And yes, we stay out. Not only at night, when you leave, we stay in here. Long past what my admin's calendar says I'm supposed to be. And just like you, time addressed to this is time taken away from other stuff we do. I just want to be clear that we're all vested in this. Now, there's tough decisions that have to be made. And if it was easy, everybody could do it, but it's not and everyone can't. And it does impact us all. I can only speak to me as a director. I need it. I feel you. But I also bid some level of respect, at least to be reciprocated. Unless you want to slip spots. And we can talk about a culture that is trickled down to an elementary kids are fighting. Have we talked about why elementary kids are fighting? It's because adults fight. We live in a climate where social media is the new boxing ring. And we've got four hundred ninety-two referrals at an elementary school? What exactly do you want me to do about that? What exactly do you need me to, as a board director, for me to do? About you got four hundred and some odd kids and yet the black and brown are still getting referrals that I highly know. And you ask me, do I stay up at night? Yeah, I raised about five generations of black and brown kids. Yeah, we do. So listen, circle back. We're, we're all rowing in this boat together. There is no us against you. I've been a teacher, administrator, community servant. Yeah. It's not easy. What was easy to already be fit. But when I look at this, I didn't, I didn't see that the bishop got a new yacht. I didn't see, I definitely didn't see director number four got a new Lamborghini or anything. So I'm not sure where the narrative is coming from. But I just want to get that out. So whoever, whoever's giving you that information, don't put my name or what we do in that. That's not fair. So one of them was like, Director Larson, been doing this a long time. No more than as a teacher and kids not doing well. But they give that teaching. We make it rich without struggle. We got to figure out some hard stuff. So, long story short, short story, short, short story, short. As a director of my report, I've been working with the safety issues as expressed by Dr. Fermstad, as expressed over at Thorndike on the block out of there, saying the limo. And, and you all, a little worse because you don't have signage or anything, but on one fifty, I brought it up at the last meeting. There's yellow, no parking inside the office and people are skilled. And I met with the principal. He said, Director Parker, I'll come out there and they cuss me out, call me a racist. He said, that's a dilemma that's big enough because they, like you said, they can't enforce it. And so now it's a city dialogue. So I've been dialoguing with the mayor and councilman. So we're going to figure out how to create a safe space when it comes to the traffic. Because I agree with the representative said, as soon as there's an accident, the parents say, it's already too late. And I don't want the record to show we were negative because that's going to cost you more than the eight million dollars a year you're over budget. But let the record show that we would have exhausted all resources to keep our, our students, citizens who could, safe coming to actual. So those are some of the things we have to work on. But again, I want to be clear. And, and your, your space is safe if you can express how you feel and, and, and how we're in that. But I don't know that I'm okay. I mean, my silence becomes complicit if I let us continue in America that it's not necessarily after. That's fair to the people that work. For. Someone. I was asked to say that. What we got to do to figure out how to work. And let's be clear, we're fighting the vision. So some of this is outside of our head. And we got to count it. So this is not, you know, I think it impacts all of us. It's not all of you, it's all of us. And so now the question becomes, are we still going to serve students at an excellent capacity? We gotta, we gotta work together. We won't be able to do it, fighting each other about it. I know that. So I got, I have mad respect and appreciation for, for what we all do, how we do it and how these tough decisions impact us. But I just want to, I don't want to pretend that that's not real. I don't want to pretend that it's, you know. I, I say this often, I'll be quiet. If you were right, I'd agree with you. The narrative of lateness managed written. I don't see that. So I don't think that we should. Has been done different. Has been done better. And we're going to get to that. But I, much respect for the work done. I'm in here with you. Those are my, I don't know Ben, I don't know what you know for this before.
Um, thank you so much. So I was sick for the last three weeks. So unfortunately, did not get to do sort of the lighting. I was super bummed about it. I was so ready to go. But so I've been doing a lot of district work behind the scenes. And I'm really looking forward to going to some Los Christ specific classes in the next week or two. But I think I actually kind of want to jump on. I, I was, I was reflecting a little bit as we were saying, folks. And, you know, really also wanted to highlight and, and kind of realign some understandings about kind of what it is we're doing here. And, you know, I think, I can't say it much better than you just did. So I think I just want to add that, like, we all have a responsibility here, right, for us. Not just for how we got here, though we do all have a responsibility for how we got here. There are decisions that are made via the collective bargaining agreement, for instance, right? That significantly impact our budget trajectory over time. Could, could changes, could things, as you pointed out, have been done differently to continue to readjust our staffing to meet our declining enrollment? Certainly, but that still would have involved a reduction of the force. Right? It still would have happened the last several years, as maybe it should have. But instead it didn't because of all of the reasons that you shared that we agree with. And yet, here we are now, where these things that maybe could have and should have happened before. Now we have to rightsize that, but the same, many of the same decisions would have happened, just sprinkle out of the funding. Not to mention the significant underfunding, right, that also contributes to our regard today. So again, going back to that, I guess, the. So again, going back to this idea of mismanagement. While I think there are so many ways where our superintendent and our chief financial officer are really thinking creatively about how things are shifting and can be done differently, they don't have any more money to work with than we did before. Um, we are out funding. There's no reason for us to have that, we just are. I really encourage you, if you have, uh, concerns or if there's uncertainty about why, uh, something is being cut, and I even hate to use that because if we think about like the before natural program, for instance, um, we had a grant from the state to cover twenty percent of our program, it's not actually even before natural program. We used that to provide before natural program, that grant is gone, we no longer have that grant. So it's not as if the district just said, we can no longer pay for this thing. But we can't, because that money is coming from the state. It is gone. That doesn't mean we're not gonna provide a program where our young people can go before and after school. That is happening, and the worst of that is happening right now. Will it be one hundred percent free for all of our families? No, we're gonna do that on a affordable basis, right? To ensure that families that really need it have access to that care. But if you're curious about something, instead of potentially listening to the narrative that's out there, listening to the, as we know, right, the rumor mill that tends to flutter, reach out to one of us, reach out to Becky, who's, I guarantee you, she will have a conversation with you. And lay it out as clearly as possible, as clearly as we can to say, this is actually what impacted that decision and what actually is happening as a result of that decision. Because I think there's often some misalignment there, in what we think is happening and what is actually. So get the clarity that you need from the right people. And then I think the last thing that I just wanna name is that, you know, since I've been on the board the last year and a half, almost two years now. We've listened to so many of the challenges, and we have made changes at the administrative level to try to meet the needs of the change, of the things that we all, that were shared with us that we needed. We've done that. But change takes time. These folks are new. Culture, time, culture change takes time. It requires openness, effort, and work on the part of everyone. Culture change cannot live on the backs of just a few. It involves every single person. So we all have a responsibility for creating a district that we all save that we want. We all have a responsibility to do that.
So my, my, just to, uh, get the X talk that I went to at Highland. My question was. But, um, as far as, I think, there's still, like, any of you hear from us? Okay, because I reached out to them to see, you know, how the X went, they said it went good, that they weren't curious, but they have heard of me. So.
I can tell the vice president, and so, yeah, I did, and, um, we are, I'd say, we're not experienced, we are the first.
Okay, I think that there was an email I went to see back, so could you just send me in that, and just say that's there, so that I can point the.
Well, there's one, there's one of, you know, it's back and forth, which, yeah, thoughts we're working on specifically. Uh, because we're trying to make sure that we never go into that, and.
Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure that if, I just wanna make sure that if someone's saying, hey, we haven't heard, but that's not true, that then I can just say that.
I'm not gonna say that either, but that's, that's made them include, make sure that.
That would be great.
Don't like us, that doesn't, they'll, I'm sure, oh.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
I guess, I, I, you know, it was felt, I guess, all the way down here, because I was thinking with all the lines, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna. I wanna make sure that, um, you sat here tonight, I mean, you were definitely heard. I just wanna make sure that you know that you're heard and that, um. You know, I can't, I can't imagine putting in the time and effort, you know, hearing the long years out there and then, and getting a letter, and, you know, everything is going there, that's just, it's just real people, real life, that stuff. That's. That's hard, that's definitely, that's, I guess, why I have to say it's hard, I am, um. I don't want you to think that, that what's set up here and then move on, that it impacts you. And that what you do here wasn't important. What you did here, and then going forward, is not important. It's just, it's a terrible spot hole. Period. You know, and I don't know, going forward, all the answers. I don't have all the answers, and I don't think anybody in this room does, but as a collective, I'd be. The vice principal, I don't know if she's still here or not, but the letter that she wrote, if anybody could see her and have that email to me now, that's a good, for me, a good little beacon to go, as we go forward, the most, because what she said was super, at least to me, clever. That'd be great. Outside of that, thank you.
Well, I'm saying, it sure picked a weird night. Hence my, I think it was strong, they're hard. I live here. I live on five hours. I know about the crap problems, I have people on the highway that are good. Right, I know that seven morning, people speak faster, like this, you know. I don't want to, basically, raceway is called anymore, it changes on each other sometimes. I know what it's like to be here, I've talked with my parents, I've talked with you. I know everyone in this neighborhood needs a speed bump, we got some stoplights in Flag, remember, they're not working. Twenty-four hours, I think, just as schools, places, it's a raceway. Uh, and it's not safe, so thank you for that ask, thank you for the ask. Um, I consider myself a personal friend of Mr. Baker. From the day he was principal here to where he's at now, I'm a retro technology. You don't think I a hundred and ten percent support things that see self-credit? In terms of STEM, for our ground state, and how you follow? I do it. Only breaks my heart, because we talked early on, and I started going to every meeting, and they let me speak while it's set up. And I just really want this district to hold it set up. I wanted to do the best it can, this is literally our valley, and it's pretty dark. Um, but as we go to try to figure out pathways, who still have better attendance, who still have better scores, to have people, one day, say, I wish my kid could go to full school district. Because there are things here, when we first started going with everybody from all over the world, it's called, welcome back to the world. This is the greatest way we come in. Um, our students are leaving high schools with one of the languages. We think that there are corporations all over the world that want people like that. We are going to, at some point, think that, like, what people just go, wow, different typical, I want to be, I want to be in my school, I want to be in my. That's where we're headed. Um, I can't fall into what the rumor mill says, whether it's true to it or not, because of that, I agree with everyone on the, I would recommend that superintendent. I live in a world, we're here now, but we didn't get that. And, uh, there's very few, very few chess pieces on the board right now. And I hope we can fix that soon, but we have to be honest with each other. Um, Larson's right, we gotta get people, we gotta money, give it up. And if not, we gotta start banging and clapping in our tin cup with every corporation we can. Help our after-school programs, there are whole networks nationwide that I know about, through the city that worry about after-school programs, and we gotta plug in, and they have corporations, colleges. You'd be blown away if you go face to full district, so we need to get that done. Uh, number one to me is the sage and principal people, whether it's my neighborhood, or S K U, or maybe the elementary schools. We've been getting track advice from the council, and some of you know, I've been on city council for twelve years. I personally, to find out whether it's okay for a director to start a petition in their neighborhood. But I think it's time for me, if you just now appointed me, and hopefully you'll start me in soon, put me the doorbell, and I think I'll bring a petition with me. Because I know that city council listens to several hundred voices. You know, it's good that Director Brockerys is also climbing with the mayor and the council. We just have to start screaming, that's, that's what we gotta do, we just put the spotlight on, see, why is this okay for our kids? So, there's not a voice that came here today that I, I can't imagine sitting in a chair and knowing that I didn't let go. And I'm talking to the people who are part of the decision, whether we like it or not. We have to make it happen, the circumstances are, they've stated over and over again. We have less kids that are funding, is drying up from the COVID period. Um, we've got inflation, that increases the cost of staff, the cost of faculty, the cost of equipment, and our revenues simply are going down. And so, it's the worst, it's not, it's, it's, I hate to, they could call it perfect storm, but it literally is the worst of all possible, even in our situation. I hope in a couple of years, that you feel strong enough about this school, and it'll take a couple of years, that you want your kids back here in this school. That's what's on my heart, when I listen to you testify, so thank you for putting it out there. Again, I, I definitely want to stop the crap. Doing what, so making people feel like they can just throw the O in there, and I don't care if it turns into ideas like, these, these other parents could come in at five after, these other parents could come in at ten after. Whatever it takes, but they all get a merge at one like that, and just play havoc. And what does otherwise a peaceful network and a beautiful school? With beautiful children from all over the world. So that's what I have to say, just know, I told you just every time we've ever held a meeting, I have since twenty twelve, I stood out there, waiting, signing, saying, banging on doors, I believe in this school district. I think we can be strong again. And we are on our knees right now, but we will not say that. Thank you.
All right, um, all right, so then we'll move to, uh, take the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I mean. So.
All in favor? All right, great, it is approved. Um, next we'll move to our questions-only presentations, we have two that we just kind of, uh, either go one by one, or we'll open together, but the monthly financial statement for March of twenty twenty-four, and then twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four financial forecast. Just kind of as a reminder, people are listening, and they may not normally, when something's submitted a question, the only presentation, um, the board gets the opportunity to, uh, ask questions, uh, prior to the board meeting. Uh, those are usually all published on board adoption, we're curious, that type of questions, um, that we're asking, that maybe aren't asked here in this public space, that is all so publicly available to you. Um, but that's why sometimes these questions from the presentations are still a little bit, we don't have a lot more questions, um, besides the ones that we have answered there, so. Go with that, what additional questions do we have?
So I guess I just wanna, um, kind of make a comment on, um, this enrollment report. And just to be aware of this budget, and, you know, what concerns me is that some of the, um, class sizes, and they particularly, that's me too. And, um, I just wanna make sure that we, um, particularly as we go forward to next year, uh, really pay attention to keeping those class sizes down as much as possible. Partly because, otherwise, the state and potential should take away some of our money, which we don't need to be doing, so. So that has to be kind of a, I just wanna make that comment, as we put together the development for next year. I know this year was kind of crazy because of all the info that students moving around and then, but I just wanna call attention to make sure that, that we get those, those, particularly those weak class sizes need to be a lot closer to seventeen, which is a mistake of course, so.
I don't know, I'm curious about something, or maybe, I am not a pro of the bigger classrooms, although they should all be quite small. Um, seventeen is even, but I think, right? Uh, but I'm wondering, I know we get the, um, the funding from the state if class sizes are, is average seventeen or act seventeen. Have we done a cost comparison to see, like, is that worth this, the money that we get? Um, versus right now, what we could potentially, uh, yeah, have we done a comparison?
Uh, Amy Fleming CFO, not currently, uh, I've been running numbers to look at our class size compliance purposes, so seventeen to one ratio. Right now, district wide, we're sitting at sixteen point seven two, um, as of April, so the data in the question says, you mentioned, it's actually updated with the official numbers. And so we're sixteen point seven two, the magic number is eight hundred and eleven students. Uh, before we kind of risk some of this compliance where we lose from the state. Um, and so then it's a careful situation, that we have to weigh between moving staff to compliance services, um, versus, you know, if they're kind of all, one of that. And so, um, it's always a balancing act, that we have to play, it's kind of part of that big puzzle of the living acts, um, as we're trying to put all these pieces, you know.
This is, this is where, I think, again, we're just gonna have to work together on this, because, you know, we're gonna have, there's we have a potential need to remove some people to different buildings, and, you know.
Right.
But that's, and nobody really typically doesn't like to do that, but in order to keep our, our maximum funding levels. Now, the one thing, if people look at these numbers, you can understand, there's class size and funding problem, or, um, it's not, uh, the, the, it's not just the classroom teacher, so there's, in terms of the ratio, but it gets added into the teacher count, and it's the specialists and certain other teachers, so. So it doesn't, um, uh, it's not showing people to think that, you know, uh.
It's not, right, it's not strictly a teacher, student ratio, and includes like music.
Right.
Um, art.
Right.
P D, things of that nature, is included in that calculation.
Parents are very closely on the line, turn that, as well, maybe some conversations as well, with our, you know, labor, the labor partnership team today, and that came up in conversation as well. Was that something we're all paying attention to, is making sure, because, like, for example, I'll just give an example for this year, you know, we had, um, in the beginning, in October one, um, we had one school in particular, where our elementary schools that actually wasn't understaffed at the classroom. Uh, we, instead of moving that, we decided to, because we looked at capacity, like, the building was getting too full, so then we made a decision, which isn't, you know, we don't wanna move kids out that, especially away from the site, but that would be the decision to change that boundary, at least for the reverting students, to move in, to fill up that classroom. And then we're doing that again, right, starting in April, so we've had to do that a couple of times, because it wasn't an option to just move the teacher to cast keep you, because they didn't have space, right? So it's a balancing act to be in space, you know, the students, what the student needs are, and what the capacity to put a staff, or can we move, should we, it's, it's, it's more than one thing to consider, it's multiple things to consider, so.
Including the, it's like a bargaining, you know, pay more, if you go over, like, twenty-two, so, yeah, there's multiple.
Yeah.
Factors.
Which we do, we do, yeah, so, with all of those things, and so, it is tricky, it is tricky, but the compliance piece is something, while somewhat, there's many, multiple things we're monitoring, I don't know.
And I guess the reason, I'd like to follow something, I was like, oh, the years, talking to teachers, this is like for years and years, class size makes a difference. Particularly with our, you know, our demographics, and spread out of, of, uh, where students are from, you know, brand new to all students, who are highly capable, native born. And so that spread becomes really different. And a lot of different student levels, so. And it's a lot of different student levels, so.
It allows them to be practice here. I think it's established that from back to thirty students, everyone.
I mean, it's really interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that our CFO, you know, from the last report about the balance, you know, ran a spend of a four hundred thousand dollars in new revenue coming in for this year, and so, you know, to kind of make up this, this, this multimillion dollar hole that we have, it's going to take you know, a lot of, you know, hundred thousand here for, you know, a lot of these things, so, anyway, good job for finding, you know, I know you've spent a lot of time you know, finding all the problems, but now you're actually finding some of the potential solutions, so every one of those, you know, hundred thousand, whatever it is, it's, it helps a lot as we move forward, and and it's, it's tough, also, I think people need to understand that businesses, you know, need to kind of notify potential layoffs before we necessarily have a really solid view on what our revenue may be next year, which is always tough, that means the districts have to be conservative about that, and they have to do more, and typically almost most of the districts do kind of hire back some people at the end, but we just don't know that until you get there. So it's kind of a, it puts districts in a tough situation, I'm listening, it's going to be tough around here for a while, but I think I know that happened last year, there's some people who initially said rip notice due, and then we're able to hire them back, so, anyway. Just, that's the way the system works. That's, that's sort of just a problem to handle.
One, so I understand the pattern, but is it going to be over and over that? We had a problem at Port Royal, and then we realized a whole lot, but we paid back eight hundred K. And then the next month that they kind of paid the prison, it was going to be repeated.
So I go, for a while, yes, to be perfectly honest, because we're in a negative fund balance situation, it kind of forwards the cash. It's going to take a while, so even if we get to zero fund balance, that cash will take a little bit of time to start catching up, because we're going to get to a positive. So we have this long, ongoing for a while.
So I can expect it over the next two to three.
Oh, yeah, I would say, hopefully that we can start drawing down that inner front lawn, but we will still have a little front lawn, or we can go a little more, I should say, a little, a little more.
So once we hit zero, you know, they've got your crystal ball. Just setting expectations, we'll take a year, a few years beyond that, we'll kind of start inching away at the moment.
So as a part of that, the condition was in the requirements that we have to be, we have to be at zero five at the end of twenty twenty-five, so next is the year. And then the following this year, we have to have a fund down seventy percent, which is about, what, two to the minimum? So that is about the time that we'll start building up our reserves and certainly getting into a better cash flow position, although there will be times of the year that we will have to do short term borrowing. Based on the way that we're funded by the state, because it's not a leave of the month every single month. And as a matter of fact, for example, we get public tax proceeds in April, and so our portionment from the state is lowered in the month that we get a large public tax proceed. And so it's not like we're leaving ten percent for the month that we're giving for all our state payments. So that comes into consideration as we're looking at a cash flow, what that's going to be like for us.
Yeah, I understand that, so which you choose, a lot of times we have to extend things before we get the revenue, back revenue later, so to attach the, there will be the on fire way, just to keep the cash on.
And the only other question, just because I understand city budgeting, and we had no reserve funds when I was on the council, because we spent it all worrying about the collapse of a dam and a flood. So mission one for me was to get the reserve funds back in place, it was just for emergencies, catastrophes, earthquakes, I don't know, flooded administration building, elementary schools. Do we have that, or are they?
We do have a policy that says that we're suggesting a certain percentage of our fund balance is reserved. And so, yes, we do, we technically have that, so we're probably on that situation, so.
So we, it's a policy, but it's not intact, we get where we are financially.
We had in the past, with six percent, and we're overall funded at the goal. Finding condition wants us, it's obviously laid out for everybody here, the finding condition wants us at the end of twenty four to twenty five to be at zero percent. Twenty five, twenty six, four percent, which means there'll be more cuts in the following year, about two point five million is what we've estimated. And then six percent, depending on where we are, if we have shown potential, you know, progress in those two years, then either give us back four hundred twelve, but the board policy is six percent, so we still have to or do something to get this, and then say we need to get it for years, whatever the board determines will be appropriate.
Okay, so that's like really precarious and frightening.
Yeah.
How's our insurance doing?
Insurance, we're not sure to be.
They all go down.
Well, I'm just saying, we're still paying, yeah.
Oh, no, they be on.
Sure that latest damage and help, I just want to, and wherever we're.
Oh, yeah, regarding that, the, the condition, that is, we're getting a report on that, so you'll be aware.
Take a wait, thank you.
So yeah, insurance costs, that's, that's a statewide district, issue to the state, for this, for instance, the last year, a increase for the district by a two percent increase, and then that covered insurance. Insurance, in our district, probably about thirty, and I heard, you know, again, there's lots of other districts that are in the same boat. So that's, you know, let's say you're, that's, that's a lot of that is due to inflation, you know, doing like your car insurance and going up, all that is inflation, and that let's say you have a company or close to fund a loan, so that's, that's a big issue that every district is screening, you know.
I don't feel very nasal, whatever, whatever word you like to use, from the, from the Olympia money, they're supposed to provide enough to, what do you call it?
Well, it's the, yeah, it's the paramount duty of the, of the state of the country.
And we feel very ample. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that brings us now to the action item portions of our agenda. The first is action item eight, which is approval of human resources staffing. Any questions, comments? They all in favor? Next is the approval of, actually, I'd be approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar. Questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is the approval of resolution number nine four seven, which is the budget extension, which is for clarity, it's the budget that we had a full hearing on today, that we don't pack it, yes, thank you.
Selling it for eight million. For eleven million, I'll read it to you.
Don't, don't tell this to me, okay. Okay, any motion for this?
Salute.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, all right, next is approval of action item D, which is the resolution number nine four nine, the reduction in force for classifieds. Questions, comments, yeah, just wanted to clarify for the record, for the team, we have a agreement with the teach, the civil education association, which also by state law as well, that all the qualifications have to be done by May, no later than May fifteen. We are starting the process on May first, so the process will begin on May first to May fifteen, so all of them that will complete in turn. That is kind of statute and agreement, so I just wanted to say that for the record while it's happening right now. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor of approval of resolution number nine four nine? Next is approval of resolution number nine five zero, authorizing superintendent to issue non-renewal notices. So.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then last is approval of resolution number nine five one, a reduction in force for certificate.
Second.
Questions, comments? If you're all in favor. We should use different words, because we're in favor of all states. But if. All right, so that is approved, that brings us to our final opportunity for comments. If you are here and would like to offer something else, you are more than welcome to do so. If you're joining us still online, you can raise your hand, or use that chat feature to let us know your name, and then if you would like to offer a comment. Okay, all right, we'll see you done, then we'll move to adjourn our meeting. All in favor?